All right, we have a quorum who call this meeting of the regular meeting of the Roxbury Board of Finance to Order. We have everybody here except for John, who will probably check in knowing him. So, welcome.
Thank you.
Has everyone had an opportunity to read the minutes from the last meeting?
Yes.
Yes.
Is there a motion to approve?
No move.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion?
I do have discussion. I, it, where it says that I moved to rescind the motion, I moved to table it, not to rescind it.
That's correct.
We couldn't table because you already discussed it. So, I looked it up and the word is rescind.
That means the motion is taken, i- is, is dead?
I thought it was, I thought it was taken back.
You can make it again.
All right.
Okay. In favor of approving, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Motion carries. Okay, on to business, the American Rescue Plan money, which is what we were just discussing. Nanette, do you care to remake your motion?
Um, you know, I think I will, why don't I wait, Andy, and see how the rest of the discussion progresses?
Okay.
Um, or would you prefer to get it back on the table?
Um, well, we can put it back on the table and have the discussion of the motion, which-
Okay, okay. So, I move that a significant portion of the funding be be applied to bridges and culverts.
I think we need to be a little more specific than that.
Okay.
I believe last month we had a, had a dollar figure, we had things broken out.
Well, in the motion that was rescinded, it just, it was very general, so I was just trying to make, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm happy to say the money that we had, the money previously discussed to be allocated to the firehouse, be allocated to bridges and culverts. Does that help?
Yeah, I think we need to actually get back to the list we had been making and come up with the specific numbers. I don't think we, I'm not quite sure what the point to, I mean, you know, I think everybody agrees in principle with what you're saying, but let's get down to brass tacks. Does that make sense?
Absolutely.
Yeah, and I just spoke for everyone. I apologize, I don't usually do that, but is that the sense of the board?
I think the, 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 the sort of context was to move the conversation and the money away from focusing on the firehouse because of all of the obstacles and to instead focus the largest chunk of money on, I, I'm, I'm not remembering now whether it's bridges or culverts that are allowed. But I think that was the substance of the conversation, Andy, was, was to basically move, move the focus of the conversation.
Right, I agree.
Okay.
And my notes from last month, can't read my own handwriting here, I believe it's thirty-five five thousand for, it might be thirty thousand for the fire department to reimburse them for picking in Fiddlin, that had to be canceled. Forty-five thousand for durable medical equipment for the ambulance.
Correct.
Fifty-five thousand for something that I have noted as BB.
Broadband.
Broadband, broadband, there we go. Thank you. I have mine. This is why I did not excel in school. One point, fifteen thousand for the Health Department, Health District.
Fifteen hundred.
Fifteen hundred. Okay. Five thousand for the Land Trust Bridge. Five thousand for Chor. Five thousand for the Shippard River Association. Friends of the Library, five thousand. Five thousand for something I have noted as SC.
Senior Center.
And then five thousand for GW.
Green Woods.
Green Woods, yes. Senior Center. Right. I believe that totaled up to one sixty-one five, is that correct?
One sixty-one five, correct, Andy?
Yep. And then we had been, my understanding was that the balance we were planning to use to towards our bridges and culverts, towards the ongoing issues with them. And so what's the sense of the board on that? How do we feel? Are we still happy with it?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with it, Andy.
Yep.
Can I, can I just add a request that came in? First of all, is Kim Barron on? She was out ill today, so maybe not. But she and I did meet with the Connecticut Community Foundation on Zoom because wanted to talk about how to distribute some of these funds to local nonprofits. Kim was looking for an application process, et cetera. And it's, they did get back to us and basically the, the short of it is, is that they absolutely would help us to the tune of three thousand dollars. And so, Kim unfortunately has been out a little bit and but she thought that that was something she really would like to have help with. So, I just want to throw that little piece out. But also, in the meantime, from the Emergency Management Director, we did get a, a project request for some radios and and it was, it's the need for interoperable communications radios. That would be for fire and EMS. And so, he sent me a little memo and the approximate cost would be two thousand dollars each, looking for possibly twenty. And that would be forty thousand. And then a dispatch interconnect equipment, approximately ten thousand, so the total project would be fifty thousand dollars. And it's Kenwood portable radios, eight hundred megahertz to the state of Connecticut bid specs. And it really is so that there's interoperability between departments, not only ours but others. And he said, moving forward, he thinks that this is something that we should probably do. The, the system currently is, was designed by in-house, in-house by members approximately twenty-five years ago. And it relies on one radio tower, the cell tower at the transfer station. The tower is interconnected to our dispatch center, which is Northwest Public Safety. It is located at St. Mary's Hospital in Waterbury. The system is analog, it relies upon miles of telephone cables and three switching stations just to get to the system in Waterbury. And while it works well, it only provides approximately ninety percent radio coverage for our town. And we are not able to communicate with some of the mutual aid partners. So, I do have something that I can send to you on that. Again, this goes along with the equipment for our emergency services, which we said would, with the priority with the ambulance and our fire department. And this goes along with helping both of them also. So, that is a request to add to this list.
Do you have any sense of what the life expectancy of these radios is? Things change quickly, it seems, these days.
Well, like he said, the, what they have is, you know, been working for the past twenty-five years and it's kind of that time to go into the next century. The, the radio system is utilized by most Connecticut state agencies, including the state police. It will allow for statewide coverage. I'm just looking for, I don't really have the shelf life on it, but I would think that it would be significant because of the cost that's being requested.
Yeah. What do you folks think?
In a nutshell, it is to put our first responders and the emergency management into the statewide radio system.
Seems like a good way to spend money to me, but.
Yeah. I have a question. Do our adjoining towns have the same radios?
That's what, that's what this is about, in that maybe, I don't know, Sarah on here, Todd, you could speak to it, but it's my understanding that, yes, many of the towns have this and that's why it's called the statewide system.
Yeah, Sarah's hand is up. Julie, could you recognize Sarah, please? Nope, that's my, that's me. That's my mouse. Sarah or Todd, do you care to comment?
Yeah, I'd like to ask a few questions about this. First of all, this is the first the fire department's even heard of this. And I'm kind of wondering if, would this be replacing some of our radios or are we adding more radios to the system that we already have? Is it compatible to what we have? We can talk to all mutually towns except for, one has a, their own radio system and all that. It's a little bit difficult, but I've never, nobody's brought this to the firehouse, nobody's brought it up at the membership, nobody suggested it and not too sure.
It's coming under, it's coming under emergency management. It is, it is new. I didn't have this at the last meeting and
But if it's something we're going to put into the fire trucks or if we got a wire in or something like that, or is this replacing ours, adding to it? Like, what is, yes, what?
Yes, replacing.
We're going to replace all our whole radio system with this?
That's my understanding.
Well, nobody's brought this up to the fire department at all. Doesn't-
Well, I'm just-
For the right channels and we've just spent quite a bit of our own money updating all of our own radios and we've spent quite a bit of money at the tower, updating that to make better coverage in town.
Well, I'm just reading what was presented to me. We can certainly ask. So, I'll, I'll read you something that was said here. It says, despite being relatively newer equipment, along with being well-maintained, the radio system has failed numerous times. During every wide-scale power outage, the system fails at about the four-hour mark when the switching circuit box's batteries die. And when Roxbury's without power for days, it isn't until the National Guard delivers two generators to our switching circuit boxes that our system returns to the air, as long as there aren't other failures in the path. Now, this is not, this is not set in stone. It certainly is up for discussion, but it, it came to me and I'm throwing it out and I think that it absolutely should be looked at.
Okay, but our radio system, it does go down after the batteries go down, but that's Frontier brings in a generator. One time, the National Guard brought one in, only once, because there wasn't enough generators and Frontier got a hold of them and got it in there. We have been doing quite a bit of work at the tower and everything up there. You know, the radios, we've had a glitch here or there, but it always goes to the backup system and we're right back up and going. In a big townwide, you know, hurricane or something like that, where you don't have power in town for four or five days, yes, the batteries do go down, you need to get a generator up there. I've been asking quite some time to get a permanent generator up there that they could just swap over or do. And we were looking at different radio packages within the fire department. Problem is, some of these packages that you get or you look at, you can't, some towns won't be able to talk to others. We have a neighboring town right now that did their own radio package and we have a hard time talking with them. We basically get to the scene, then we get one of their radios and start it that way.
Okay, so, I don't want to spin our wheels on this. I think that-
It's deserving of another meeting.
Yeah, we have time. We don't have to approve this right away. I would like to see the fire department, the ambulance, the emergency services director get on one page on this before we discuss it, because we don't know what we're talking about.
Yep. So, I think that that should happen. I'm just throwing it out there because it did come to my attention.
Thank you. Okay. Todd, thanks for your input. I really appreciate it. Maybe you can get together and Barbara can work with you and let's see what, what the, what everyone thinks the needs are. Barbara, what else? Anything else?
Um, no, I mean, oh, on the ARPA?
On the ARPA, yeah.
Yep. No, I don't have, I do, I will tell you that we have made a decision on one of the culverts that needs to be replaced fairly quickly. And the one on Painter Hill Road, I met with the Public Works and we did have an assessment by Cardinal Engineering and they're talking about this, the estimated construction cost, if we went with a pre-cast concrete box, would be five hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars. And then with the metal, corrugated metal pipe arch, it's four hundred and twenty-one five. So, we can buy this equipment for, I believe it, because we just ordered the pipe, actually, so I'm not sure when it's going to be in, but it was about thirteen, it's a thirteen thousand dollars. And I spoke with Todd Gillette, who said he could absolutely put this pipe in. Some of this cost that was in here, they were going to put up the the head walls again and wing walls, et cetera. And it was decided that we can just take this pipe out a lot longer than it is currently and riprap on the sides, et cetera, and it would be good. And we have done this in other places in town and just we all sat and said, this is, this is what we should do. We could save a lot of money and it does need to get done quickly. If we wait to try to get the money from the local bridge program, which we could for this, it's going to take a while and it, it's something that just needs to get done. So, that, that, that's an example of a culvert that we could certainly use the money for to get done and we're not talking a ton of money and we're already paying Public Works to work. And I think it's a good idea.
Yeah, we can do it.
That's just, I'm throwing that out, but I've, that will be for the next person to take that on. But we did order the pipe. We really think that this is the way to go. The selectmen agreed.
Okay. Well, that's good. What else with ARPA money?
Nope, you already had your list here and we also have the Squire Road culvert that we were talking about. Again, the costs that are coming in are exorbitant. And those are, those are two that the Public Works guys can take care of.
Yeah, they seem pretty straightforward.
Yeah. We have all that the, that they need to do that from the engineers. We paid to go out and assess this and I think it's just the way to go.
Yep. Have you consulted with, has the engineer consulted with Russ on this, just to be sure that we're following Wetlands regs on it?
Following the Wetlands regs? No, I mean, that, we're going to have to go before the Wetlands Commission as a town.
Yeah.
But this is just replacing what is already there. It's, it's, it's not going to, obviously, Wetlands is going to tell us exactly what we have to do.
Yeah, I just wanted to be sure they were in the loop. Okay. Anything else on ARPA money? Anyone on the board?
No, I think that we could certainly set up a meeting about these radios. I'm happy to do that. And get all the emergency services, emergency management together.
Good.
If, since we do have some more time before we have to have a quote list.
Yeah, that's, that's been a, I think it's been a helpful thing.
I know.
Okay, does anyone else on the board have anything they'd like to add about the American Rescue Plan money?
So, do we need to vote on the motion, Andy?
We don't really have a motion. There wasn't a second, so I don't think we need to, there's anything to vote on at this point. And I think we still have some things up in the air, but if you disagree, feel free to make a motion.
That's fine.
When is our drop dead date on this now?
It's not October.
It's like- I think it's in January or March, right?
Yeah, it's, it's some distance off.
Well, the thing is, is that we did receive half of the money and if this pipe comes in, it would be really nice to get this project done on Painter Hill only in December. That's what I've talked about with the Public Works guys.
Well, emergency services can get back to us by our November meeting. I don't see any reason why we couldn't go ahead.
Is this, I, I, I have no question, Andy, if you may ask.
Yeah, please.
Is this an all or none situation? Do we have to, do we have to vote all of the money committed before we can spend any? Or can we use the first half as we see fit and then work the second half up until the time we, we actually have to finish up?
Yes, there has to be, the culvert money, it's my understanding, it can be spent. The other monies, Kim is going to want these applications if they are going outside the town.
But we can do that. We can do it in a staged manner.
Yes.
Well, it's not an all or none situation. Okay.
So, we could- Is there any reason we do not tap into the tar fund to pay for this? For the pipe?
Say that, say that again?
If the, the money for the ARP fund is not available and you need to pay for this pipe, is there any reason why we couldn't tap into the tar fund to pay for this?
Yeah, there's no reason why we couldn't do that.
All right, thank you.
Okay, so it doesn't sound like-
Andy, I'd just like to ask for, in advance of the November meeting, for us to get a list, the specific list with the amounts that circulated to all of us, so that we're all looking at the same piece of paper and that has all of the amounts and the totals, including whatever figures Barbara has for the bridges and culverts.
I think that would be very helpful.
So, we can all be on the same page.
Yeah.
Going a little bit farther, Barbara, you said Squire Road, you had some estimates, but they were very high. What's the estimates? Is there anything that we can go with a rough number so we can start to plan?
Wire, I believe that Squire was even higher, I've got Painter Hill right here. Squire was even higher in that it was closer to eight hundred thousand. It's outrageous. And so, we did not, we did not price the piping for it, but they told us what it would be. I just wanted to be able to make sure we could get Painter Hill going, because that, the water comes over the road. The worst, we haven't had that issue on Squire Road, but the sides, one of the side walls is at, is definitely caving in, so we need to do something. Now, we just had a cave-in over on Wakeley Road and the bridge, the culvert over there, the culvert is okay, but the wall just fell into the river. And so, I'm getting prices on just getting those, that fixed. It's got to get done, because the road is just hanging. So, that, and that bumps in front of Squire, quite honestly. But these are three things that Public Works can do. And I think that we should let them do it.
They can do it.
Lot, lot less.
Go for it.
Yeah. I'll find that price for you though, Patrick.
But I think Nanette's suggestion is a good one. It would be nice to have, just to be sure that the numbers that you want, Barbara, the Board of Selectmen want, are the same ones that we're discussing here.
Yeah.
And also including the, the radios for EMS. All right, what else?
Can I just ask Todd and Sarah, if you're going to be around the next two weeks? Maybe set up that meeting? Of course. Okay. I'll try and do that.
Problem.
Excellent.
Okay.
All right, shall we move on to the first selectance report?
That wasn't it? Okay.
Well, I thought there was something else you wanted to discuss.
Yes, there is, actually. There's a couple of things that I wanted to discuss. All right, but the Senior Center, I did send you all something just recently. Let me just get rid of this. I'm the Senior Center Director. And I sent you the minutes. We had a special Board of Selectmen's meeting and that kind of outlined what happened. We had interviews for the Senior Center Director and we actually interviewed seven people, which was amazing. And we talked about full-time versus part-time. It was advertised as a full-time job and then went back and said, you know, if it does not become full-time, because I do, we do have to increase the budget, it may go back to part-time. Jim was there, Linda Wallers was there interviewing. And I would say that most are not interested in part-time, but even more than that, the Senior Center Director and the Board of Selectmen, and now the Director, Bill Curran is on here of the Senior Center Board of Directors Chairman. We all really do believe it is time to give the Senior Center a shot in the arm. And it, to do that, you need, you need someone who is full-time. That does bring on benefits, but the selectmen voted, I don't know, a couple of years ago, and the Board of Finance also approved that any new hire would only be, have benefits for the employee. This would be the first time that that would happen, if we were able to hire. So, the Board of Finance has the authority to increase any department up to twenty thousand dollars per year, per department, without going to town meeting. Now, and Kim Barron has said that she thought that this was a change in the budget and that it should go to town meeting. It is a new position. So, I respectfully disagreed. I asked, because I asked our auditor what he thought. And he said he was not going to commit either way, because it is listed in the budget as a Senior Center Director. And that, you know, if I thought that I could prove that this was the same, the same position, then, you know, then I, it would be, it would be okay with him. So, then I said, well, I'm going to ask Gail what she thinks, our town attorney. Because Linda is looking to retire. We do need to make a move one way or the other. The total of benefits and salary would, it's a little over seventeen thousand, I was going to say seventeen hundred thousand, seventeen thousand dollars, which is under the twenty thousand threshold. And Gail, in short, said, And Gail, in uh, short, said, your, your ordinance that describes the senior center position, senior center director position does not say whether it is full or part-time. If it had said that it was part-time, then maybe you should go to a town meeting to get this approved. But it doesn't say that. And then she goes on, and I did send it to all of you. I don't know if you, if you've gotten this or not. I did send you the email with what she said. Let's see. Basically, she said, it is my opinion that the statute below would allow the Board of Finance to approve the increased amount for the senior center director without town meeting approval. The position is set out in the ordinance at section two point eighty-six, which does not designate it as part-time or full-time. So the position is the same either way. I'm asking, I just, I don't wanna get in arguments with anyone. I would, uh, what does the Board of Finance want me to do? First of all, I'm asking you to approve the increase to the budget, this present year's budget. And then I'm asking you, are you asking me to go to town meeting to get that approved? When you are totally in your authority to increase the town budget twenty thousand dollars per department, without going to town meeting? Or do you feel you need more justification for the position? I'm looking for your guidance.
Let me go first, and we should have a discussion on this. Um. I hesitate to increase the town budget, uh, even though we can, even though it's within our uh, purview. Because, well, the cost of government always ratchets up, but hardly ever ratchets back the other way. And I think that the people of the town should have an opportunity to um, have a say on this myself. I think it should go to town meeting, but I'm just one person, so have at it. Anyone else?
You know, I see, I see uh, uh, Bill Curran is on, on the line. Uh, do you want, I know that uh, there was a recommendation letter. Do you wanna put any, should we welcome him to put in some input on this?
Um, sure, I have no issue with that at all. Phil?
Thanks for, uh, thanks for inviting me, and thanks for inviting me to speak. Um, you know, our, our. You know, we're keenly interested in uh, in seeing improvements in what's going on at the senior center. Um, as you're, I'm sure, very aware, uh, the last eighteen months has been um, a very difficult time for the senior center. Um, as a matter of fact, our, our demographic was probably the most threatened. It was the most threatened demographic uh, during COVID. And as time has come, as we've come back to a flattening of the dangers, or generally speaking, the dangers of COVID. We've had.
Hey, Bill, you're, you're fading out.
Yeah.
So, we'd like ahead of it, and be a.
And, can anyone hear Bill?
No.
No.
Bill, your, your connection's bad. We're not hearing you at all.
Now he's frozen.
Hey, Bill, turn off your video. That will give you more bandwidth.
Now he's gone.
Okay.
Now he's back up.
Are you getting knocked off?
Yes.
Try turning off your video and just use your audio, because we couldn't hear you. Can't hear you, Bill.
On the uh, you know, closure of COVID, um, very strongly, we feel, uh, because it's a growing population in town, there will be more demands uh, on whoever is um, going to, to replace Linda. And it would, because of this growth in this population, as we know, I'm not sure if you heard me say this before, but it, you know, every day, uh, people, millions of people become over the age of fifty-five throughout the country. Um, um, we feel that um, a, a more professional uh, person will be able to uh, develop the services and the opportunities that we feel we need to be able to, to offer this to more and more people. But we're, we're, but you folks, your cost gets distributed. Uh, I, I guess this seventeen thousand dollars would be about a twelve.
We're losing you again, Bill.
Yeah. I don't know, maybe, maybe Ken, you could join in.
Yeah, and I guess, I guess, um, one of the things that, that we've discussed uh, uh, several times, and I've, I've watched the, you know, senior center grow, you know, exponentially, really, the kinds of things we've offered and, and the kind of programs we have in place now. And of course, the demographic is growing. And one of the things that we've been blessed with is Linda Waller, because she's basically been putting in full-time, although her job is not. So she's developed all these things, because she doesn't need insurance, and doesn't need benefits. So now we basically have a, a full-time person that we obviously really can't replace with a part-time person. And we can't find any really good qualified people unless we offer benefits. So we really can't move the senior center forward without a full-time person with benefits, because we can't attract any talent without it. And that's kind of the, that's the short version. Because, I mean, if we go with a part-time person, what's gonna happen is the services, the services at the senior center will retract. They'll, they'll have to be reduced, because there won't be enough manpower to do it.
Okay. That's concise, I appreciate that. Um, what's the, what does the board think?
So, can I ask a que- can I ask a question?
Please.
The way I read Gail's um, notes was that we can transfer unexpended fund balances, but we can't increase appropriations without going to a town meeting. Am I reading that incorrectly?
I think that's correct.
So, we're not, technically, we, we can't expand the budget without going to town meeting. We can only transfer from one account to the other. That's my reading of this.
And we would have, I'm, I'm sure Barbara has a, a plan for that.
Right, so I'm saying it's not really, we're not really increasing the budget.
No, but we're spending money, we hadn't, you know, we're committing to spending money for the, for future.
Yes, yes.
You're looking to spend, I mean, add another uh, around ten thousand dollars to the salary line, and about eight to the insurance line.
But where is that coming from?
It can come out of contingency.
Okay.
It could come out, I mean, and I can uh, speak with uh, Kim. You know, it can come out of the fund balance, but it can come out of the, of contingency, if that's where you so choose it to.
Yeah, well, I think it coming out of contingency is different than it coming out of the fund balance, because contingency is already in the budget.
Right. But in any event, this year we can do it without increasing the budget. Um, odds are next year, though, we would increase the budget.
Correct.
And for every year thereafter. I'm not, you know, I'm not opposed to it, but I think that the people of the town should have a say in it personally. But I'm, I'll, I'll shut up, we'll let other people talk.
I would just like to um, say that as a member of the Board of Selectmen, I do support this, because I would like to see our senior center move forward and grow and expand. And I totally agree with what Ken said, that the only way the town of Roxbury is going to make that happen is with a full-time position to attract the right person, a mover and shaker to get this going. And basically, the, the time is coming where very few people work part-time anymore. They, it's either full-time and benefits, or they, it's just not a, part-time is uh, falling by the wayside, I feel, within municipalities. There was a time when we're volunteers, then we went to part-time, and now it's full-time. But I support it.
So, uh, what do other members of the board?
So, do you, um, do you feel that we'd lose any candidates if we were to delay and go to this town meeting? Is there any, you know, uh, you know, are we gonna lose people because of it, by delaying this decision? And how much time are we looking at?
No, um, the, the urgency, I guess, comes from Linda, who wants to leave in November. She wants to leave by November one. It's not gonna happen. Um, she said she would stay on, but not past December, for sure. She'd stay on a couple of weeks in November.
What is the notice requirement for a town meeting?
Five days in the paper.
Okay.
I mean, I, I think first, you have to decide if it's something that you think that we should be doing. I um, you know, like, I, I wish Bill had his uh, mic working, but just to re- reiterate some of the things that he said, um, that board is tasked with the oversight of this asset. And um, they are keenly aware of the weaknesses uh, in it. And like I said, it's time to give it a shot in the arm. You have over thirty, what, five percent of our population is over sixty. It's growing. People are looking for things to do. We have a very active senior population. And um, they, they are always looking for more. And so this person also would have to be able to provide some things at night. Uh, maybe, you know, switch hours around, so that there are things there at night to attract people that might never walk in there. There's gonna be, you know, a huge outreach to, to uh, let people know what's going on there. So, I, I think we, first, you should decide, do you, do you want to go with a full-time position here?
One more point, Andy. Um, this would, the, what we're talking about for the uh, eighteen thousand dollars total, we'd be only funding this for the rest of this budget cycle, for this, the rest of this year. So it's actually gonna be less, and then when the budget comes out next year, then it's gonna be a full position. So, aren't we only looking at the difference from, you know, a shorter period of time, because we're already through the year?
That's true. Um, that's true. My concern is just, you know, creating a position going forward that wasn't in the budget as it was passed uh, back in May or June. Um, and it, to me, it feels a little bit like, without doing a town meeting, we're doing an end run around the voters of the town, and I don't like that.
Okay. But the dollars, uh, if I'm understanding this right, we're already paying Linda for part-time. Uh, the eighteen is, creates the full-time. So next year, like what Patrick's saying, it's still gonna be eighteen on top of what we've already been budgeting for the past few years.
Correct.
I fully understand that.
Yeah. It's, the, that line is gonna grow by eighteen this year and eighteen next year.
Yeah. But, you know, I'm one vote on the board, and I'm, I'm happy to be wrong. Um, but I, I think it's an important point to consider. Um, John, Ed, do you guys have anything to say?
Well, you know, I might have to recuse myself from this, because um, I'm the oldest guy here. And I use that.
The board would have to recuse themselves if this is a fair question.
The, um, you know, I, 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 I don't know what just popped into my head, is how much does a preschool full-time person cost? So we were, you know, I'd, I'd like to know the answer to that, because I think we're getting a deal here. Um, and I think the senior center has, has a good deal more capabilities than are currently being utilized. And I would be for doing, uh, you know, providing um, a full-time position to take care of that, those needs.
Ed, what's your, what's your take?
I'm leaning that way also. Um, I think John just made a good point, as did Jim and, and Barbara. Um, personally, I don't like things coming at me last minute. I like to think about things, if that makes any sense. Um, one thing that I'm not clear about is this eighteen thousand dollars, is that just to get us from November first to June thirtieth? The end of the billing, of the fiscal year, we're already four months in. Um, so wouldn't that increase by four months' salary, that eighteen thousand?
No.
Makes sense what I'm saying?
No, it, um, it would, that is the additional amount to take this position to the end of the year, but we've already spent between July and, well, prob- you know, a part of November of what is already budgeted.
Wait, I have a question here. Is the seventeen six, or whatever that number is, for the balance of the year, the fiscal year, or is that what it's gonna cost next year?
Yeah, that's my question.
Yep, that's what's gonna, that's what it's gonna cost next year.
So this would be, the seventeen would be prorated for this, the rest of this year. It would go down.
Right, we're looking at eight or nine thousand, somewhere in there, for this year, probably. Does anyone care to make a motion?
Can I just ask one more question, Andy? The people you interviewed, who are gonna be paid forty thousand dollars, is that right? That's what the salary's gonna be? Did you find somebody who you thought was gonna be really good for forty thousand dollars?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, they would hit the ground running.
Does anyone care to make a motion?
I'll make a motion. I'll make that motion, Andy, um, to uh, change the position from part of, of senior director from full, uh, part-time to full-time. Um, thus, you know, whatever the, the total amortized, uh, total for the rest of the year, uh, to include uh, and make this a full-time position.
Second.
Do we need to add the source of that extra money? Where is that coming from? Which fund? I believe we do. Um, Barbara, where do you think that should come from? Uh, fund balance or contingencies?
Um, well, let's see. A lot of, a lot of times so far, we have not had to go and use all of our contingency, and it I don't know, I, I guess I would, I would like to ask Kim what she feels more comfortable with, since I'm not gonna be here. But I have no issue taking it out of contingency right now.
Yeah. I don't think it really matters, because we can, you know, we can shuffle the money around if we need to.
We have historically, we budget a deficit, and we have historically had money left over that we have, we have not spent that deficit, year after year after year. And um, another thing that I would just like to just throw out is the, the grants that are, that are gonna be coming in for Davenport, and um, what else did I? Uh, there's the minor bridge culvert. It's over seven hundred thousand. Um, it's over five hundred thousand for Davenport, and we just got awarded three million, over three million for Wellers Bridge Road. These are the things that are gonna help our budget going forward, and this, to me. And this, to me, is is not a lot.
No, it's a small number. Um, so Patrick, do you want to amend that motion to include the, uh, source of the money from, sourcing the money from the contingency fund?
Okay, so I will, uh, make a motion to change the senior center director position from part-time to full-time, uh, with money being allocated from the contingency fund.
Okay. Um, and is there a second for that?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
I have one question, is what is the budget line item for this?
It's actually gonna be in two, it's gonna be the senior sen- than eight thousand dollars for benefits in the insurance line.
We have, we, we have a separate line for the senior director.
Correct. Right, and all of the health insurances, et cetera, are in another line in the budget.
Okay, is there further discussion?
Uh, yeah, Andy, I'd just like to say you, you brought up a very valid point. I was, um, agreeing with everything you were saying about, about letting people have a say in it. But in light of, you know, Barbara has an excellent candidate, it sounds like, to, to take the position. And, um, you know, our, our Board of Selectmen have been, um, done a great job so far. I'm gonna defer to their judgment. So, um, I just wanted to say that, that's all.
Thank you.
It was not my decision, it was the three, were unanimous, the three that we're interviewing.
Okay, great. Yeah, that's why I meant the Board of Selectmen, I'm gonna defer to their, their good judgment.
Judgment, yep.
Thank you.
Um, okay, well, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
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 Uh, any opposed? I'm going to oppose it because, not because I think it's a bad idea, but because I do think it should go to town meeting.
But Andy, I don't think this motion speaks to that.
It doesn't, I'm just saying that I'm opposing the motion and that's my reasoning.
The, the way I was viewing it was that there would be two separate, that this is just to vote our support for the full-time position.
That's not how I understood it.
Okay, well, that's how I.
Because we funded it.
You could still go to the town meeting, even though that's your decision. That is that, that's what you're presenting to the people.
Yeah. Um, yeah, we would, I think at this point, we would need a second motion. If anybody cares to make that, if no one cares to make that, then that's fine, we can go ahead, it's not. I don't mind being in the minority. Okay, um, what else is there?
Um, thank you, thank you very much. Thank you, Bill and Ken, for your input.
Thank you.
I just, uh, let me see, there's, um, you know, a couple of things that are, that are coming up. And one of the things, uh, I just would like to hear some other opinions. You know, there was a, a senior at the, at Chapag who wanted to have a dog park here in town. And so he's gone so far, you know, the Board of Selectmen said that he would have to poll the town. And, um, almost, close to three hundred people, or three hundred responses came in. There were, uh, there were some no's, but it was overwhelmingly yes. And then, um, it was also, we went back and forth about it being at the park or at the Sherman Park, at Hurlberg Park or Sherman Park. And then, um, when it started to get, I guess, some legs for this, this student, people who lived around Hurlberg Park said they didn't want it. So the, they didn't want it there, period. So the selectmen met out there to look at another spot. Jim actually came up with a, a different spot at the park that I think would work. And, uh,
Which park?
Hurlberg Park. And it would be in a different corner of the park. It would be in the back by the basketball court to the right, if you're looking at the basketball court. So, uh, I don't know, it was agreed that we would tell this student that maybe you should go back and look at Sherman Park. But there's still more, there are more things, and I don't, I don't wanna bring this, this student along anymore. I mean, there are, there are issues about maintenance, liability, that we already have liability insurance at our parks, so I'm not too worried about that.
You might wanna look into Barbara, because the, the other, just last night, on the news, there was a dog park that received some money. Uh, they call it the surprise squad. Anyway, they were gonna use that money towards their insurance policy because they had, for some reason, had to have a separate policy just for the dog park. And she said it was like sixteen hundred bucks a year for the insurance policy for the dog park. And their dog park, I, I don't know what town, it was in Connecticut. And it actually was manned, personnel were there to supervise. I don't know if that's a requirement, but it was a little more than throwing a fence up and letting the dogs go. That's my concern.
I, I, I don't disagree with that. I just feel badly that this, um, student was, has been, there's a process and it's his project and he has to go through the process. And he will find bumps in the road that are, you know, it may come that, uh, he doesn't, um, it's, it's not a viable project for the town. And, um, if that went to town meeting, maybe it would have gone awry. But, um, so I'm just trying to think of, I mean, I'm the one that was told to, to let him know. And so, you know, he's already on his way with this and I'm just trying to figure out another project for him to do. I mean, he's gonna have to figure out another project, but I, but we have, since, you know, the summer, have told him that he could look into doing this. I don't, at the end of all of this, you know, the, the project doesn't have to happen. That's not what the senior project, um, experience is about. It's about going through everything. You gotta go through the commissions, you have to go through the selectmen. You have to go through all these things and it still may not pan out for various reasons. I was a technical advisor for a couple of students and one of them, their project did not go through. It was weather related, it had a lot of other things that came up at the end. But that didn't mean that they didn't pass. But, um, but he's knowing now that this is probably not gonna go forward. And I just wanted to hear, you know, your opinion about it, if really tell him to.
I think, uh,
Catch it.
Jim, I think Jim made a very good point. Um, I'd be very, very surprised that our current liability insurance would cover that. Um, I think that you probably need a separate policy. And also, uh, I'm, you would, you would, I asked the question, um, that this dog park will be open to anybody?
Our parks is residents only. The police are up there, uh, three, at least three times a day patrolling. But, yeah, we have people from out of town that we allow to go there. And it's, uh, I'm not, I'm not going one way or another. I, it's, it's whether or not to allow him to go through the rest of this process. I just feel badly about that.
Well, I think.
So I don't see this as, oh, sorry, John, go ahead.
I, I think it might be instructed to go over to the Southbury Dog Park and take a look around.
I don't, I don't see this as a Board of Finance issue.
No, it's not, it's not. I was just asking for your opinion.
It seems to me that, that it's a project in and of itself that he learned how small towns like ours work and what the issues are and, um, what the obstacles are and how hard this is, and he should write it up and submit it and he's learned something.
Yeah, there's definitely a learning experience here.
He has to, he has to work on it the entire year, so.
Yeah.
Anyway, I shouldn't have brought it up, okay?
What's the issue with Sherman Park, Barbara? Why, why wouldn't we do it there? Why wouldn't it be allowed there if the insurance issue were dealt with?
It could be allowed there. The problem is, um, and we did speak about, we did talk about it as a board. And, um, it's out of the way. I mean,
Yeah.
you would definitely have to have somebody overseeing that. Uh, you wouldn't know who was going down there, how it was being left. You just, you just wouldn't do that. Some of the things that he brought, um, because he, we said, why don't you go and look at this? Because this would be a great spot for it. Um, he was saying, but you know, I'm looking to bring people and dogs together and it's really out of the way. And there is no supervision by anyone. Some of these parks, because I said, who supervises some of these other parks? Some people have, some towns have paid people. Some of them have their recreation people, um, their volunteers volunteer their time. Or there's just dog lovers that say they'll, they'll hang out there. But, you know, a, as I said at this meeting, I don't have a dog, nor do I have a dog in this fight. I just, um, feel badly that we've kinda strung them along a little bit. And, um, you're right, it's not a Board of Finance issue. I was just looking to see if anybody had any other ideas I could help them with.
So one thought that occurs to me and.
Passionate person I am, yep.
Um, I don't know if there's a, a project per se that could come out of this, but maybe he could look at Sherman Park and see if he can think of ways that could be developed for the benefit of the community. What could it be used for? Because right now, it's not used for anything other than growing some Russian olive, that I can tell.
Yep, he could come up with a plan for that. Not that it ever has to take place, but it could be a plan.
Yeah, it gives him something to research, something to look into perhaps, and maybe.
That's a good idea.
Yeah.
Yep. And, um, on this historic walk, the, uh, the, the board that's outside of the senior center needs to be redone. I can ask him if he would like to take that on too.
All right.
The only other thing I, the only, only thing I wanna mention is that, um, Jean Tierney is gonna be turning one hundred in, uh, on, um, October twenty ninth. She's our oldest citizen. She's also, um, a World War II vet. And I, um, actually have just spoken with the school. Uh, she doesn't want anything, but that we can't allow that to happen. And, uh, so I am going to be, um, taking her to lunch on that day. She said that would be all that she would want. But we are, we having a tree dedicated to her that's at the library. And I'm going to be bringing her by the school and all the children will be out. They're gonna make posters, they're, and everybody's gonna sing happy birthday. I'm gonna invite the town, actually, anyone that wants to go to that parking lot and be there. I'll tell them about what time and, um, so that the town can sing to her. And then, um, I forget what else I'm doing, but, uh, we're just gonna, we are gonna do that. And, oh, and I will put this out in an email blast with her address and hopefully people will send her cards. And I think that that's all she'll do, she said, uh, she would not be happy with me if I did anything, so. But I, I think that that would be nice for her.
So Barbara, um, you know, barring any, um, Board of Finance emergencies, this is going to be the last meeting, uh, where you participate is for selectmen.
That's true. Um, that's true.
And I, for one, would simply like to say what a pleasure it's been to work with you and to thank you personally for the mentoring you've given me and, and dealing with Roxbury politics ever since I ran for the Board of Ed, God knows how long ago that was.
That was a long time ago.
You, you have a, a, a well-earned retirement coming up, uh, thank you.
I appreciate it. It's been a nice run. And, uh,
You're here.
Been very fortunate to have, uh, good boards of finance to, you know, work alongside. We have a, we have a great, um, finance director who's not here, but, uh, that we work hand in hand. And, um, you know, there's just been a mutual respect for many, many years, even though the players have changed. And I'm confident that that is what will continue. And, um, I appreciate all of you, thank you.
Well, thank you, Barbara.
As do we, Barbara.
I think we have another departing member of the Board of Selectmen on the, on the call as well.
Well, that is true, we do. I wasn't even thinking about that, Jim. Likewise, you haven't missed, I mean, you used to be chairman of the Board of Finance years ago, or at least you were on the board.
I was on the board, yeah.
Yeah.
He was on the board when I, when I got on, he was on the Board of Finance.
Right.
Yeah, you're gonna have to let me say something, so.
Kenny, you were on the Board of Finance, but I.
So Ed Wett retired and I was, that, that was my second term when you were elected. And I have to say, um, that twelve years was amazing. You really put things into perspective and basically took over the budget. Because before that time, the Board of Finance primarily did the budget. Uh, and the selectman was involved, but didn't actually prepare the budget, we did. So now, when you took over, you really, you really began and started something that has continued. And, you know, I, for, for one, am, you know, spending twelve years with, with you on the Board of Finance. You know, you were totally amazing. You really put things in order, I should say. And so that, that, that's been my experience and we're all gonna miss you, I am for sure. So, you know, thank you so very much for everything, it's been awesome.
Thank you, and, um, I, I appreciate that. It's been, I forgot, you were on there already when I, when I came on. The, um, and so is Jim. And, uh, you'll get a, a kick out of this, Jim. I went over to the, uh, school today with the fifth graders. They wanted to learn about, um, local government and your granddaughter, I sat next to her. We were all out on the ground, sitting around. And so she said, well, I have a question, um, is my grandfather in there longer than you? And I said, not in, not on the Board of Selectmen, but when you put the Board of Finance, he was on a lot longer. Zoning equally as long. Now the Roxbury Museum and eight years on the Board of Selectmen. And I said, he's got way more years than I do. She had the biggest smile, so it was fun, it was really good. And, yep, it has, it's been great, um, having Jim on our, our board. And, um, at a volunteer recognition picnic, I, you know, chose to recognize you first. You know, you know how I feel. I think that our, our board has worked really well together. It's always been, again, mutual respect, even though we might not have agreed.
Always knew we'd get things worked out. No one ever had to raise a voice, uh, pound the table, never happened. And it wasn't necessary. We all kinda talked it through. And, uh, at the end, it was the right decision.
That's right.
Always.
And I will tell you one little thing, though, with Russ. Because if Jim and I outvoted him, which we did on occasion, he would say, what is this? I feel like the queen, I have no power. It's always good for a laugh. Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you, and the town is very lucky to have all of you.
Well, we're lucky to have this town.
Amen.
Absolutely.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
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 We just need to get zoning to approve a pub, that's what we need.
No, the hodge, the biblio check.
Either one. Well, good night, everyone, thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.